All right, welcome everybody to our February 18th council meeting. Let's rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to take a moment of silence for Dr. Fritz Vane. She was the chair of the Department of Philosophy at URI for nearly two decades, while a time parishioner at the same time as more parish. Thank you, everybody. And we have, so we move right to the consent agenda. We have no minutes or announcements. So is there any item from the consent agenda that somebody would like removed? All right, seeing none, all in favor, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sumed.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 10 is a motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading a resolution amending the official list of parking restrictions and regulations in the town of Narragansett in accordance with the Narragansett Code of Ordinances to restrict parking at Alcoa and Road.
Sumed.
Second.
This is a second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. 11 is a motion to approve the purchase of five new Motorola portable radios and 15 radio batteries for the police department from Motorola Solutions in the amount of
Sumed.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 12 is a motion to waive its current policy and authorize the use of the building, renovation, restoration, and reconstruction services contract with Appcor Restoration Company Incorporated to complete building improvements of the towers in the amount of $74,280.
Sumed.
Second.
Discussion, this comes from the Towers Committee for renovations there. Any comments from the council, from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 13 is a motion to approve the purchase of sewer pipeline inspection data conversion and annual software license for the wastewater division from Windcan LLC in the amount of $13,218.
Sumed.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the public? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 14 is a motion to approve, ratify, and confirm the purchase of one replacement pump for the Convent Street Pump Station from Bruntfoss CBS Incorporated in the amount of $12,439.
Sumed.
Second.
Discussion. All right, anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 15 is a motion to approve the request from the American Diabetes Association to conduct a cycling fundraiser toward a cure to be held on Saturday, October 3rd, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., subject to state and local regulations.
Sumed.
Second.
Discussion. All right, anyone from the public? I believe this is a date change, is that correct? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 16 is a motion to approve the 25-year lease agreement for the windmill building on Clark Road with the Narragansett Historical Society, subject to state and local regulations.
Sumed.
Second.
Discussion, I am going to ask our Parks and Rec Director to come up briefly to discuss this if there's any, for a brief summary, that people know that Historical Society's been looking for a home. This building has arisen as an opportunity for them, and I know that our Parks and Rec Director has met with the Historical Society about this. So Steve, if you want to give a brief summary, that'd be good. Thank you.
So, good evening. The windmill building is located on Clark Road property, as you all know, or should know, and we had met with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board back in November, December, actually, we've been meeting for a number of months with a concern in the condition of this building. It's not a historic building, but it has historic value significance in town, and it was part of Camp Jory when it was originally built and then purchased into the Town Recreation Board. So it sits on our property, it's adjacent to our administrative building, and the building's on Clark Road. So, we were concerned about the condition of the building and met with the Rec Advisory Board, and we're at the point where we are actually recommending to the town council to demolish the building. We had funding in our budget to demolish the building back in December 2009, January 2019. At that time, the Narragansett Historical Society approached us, approached the Rec Advisory Board, and wanted to take another look at the building. They had approached them a number of years ago. At that time, they were interested, but did not have the whethal of funding to be able to rehab the building. At this time, this, after January, when we were going to demolish the building, they wanted to come back to us and take a better look at that. So they did. And we, in the Historical Society, believe, and moving forward today, to ask you to allow them to have a long-term lease so they can do fundraising, and we think it's a good fit for the property, it's a good fit for the Historical Society, and I think that they're going to be a good partnership with us. I think with the property, the building, it has great potential. It's at the point where if they have the ability, and I think they do, can do the fundraising, the estimates are somewhere around $300,000 to do that. The problem with giving them a one- or two-year lease, they cannot go out and seek potential donors with a short-term lease. So this is why they're looking for a long-term lease. So, we're in full support of it. It's a building, again, we're going to demolish. I think, again, it's a good partnership, it's good for the town, it's good for the Historical Society. So I think folks are here that can, you know, talk on their behalf, but as far as we're concerned, I think the Rec Advisory Board voted to approve and recommend to the council to approve this lease. Mark Davis has looked at and approved this lease, and we're looking for your approval tonight.
All right, and any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, in reviewing the lease, I actually eventually spoke with Jim today. The way this was rolled out originally to, at least me and I believe the other council members, was that rather than tearing down the windmill to give the Historic Society the chance to be able to fundraise, to be able to complete the construction, and necessary given a period of between one to two years, however, that is not included in the lease. The lease does not make mention of that. I spoke with Dr. O'Neill today, also with Jim, and Jim has some suggested language to add on to this. Jim?
Yes, when Jill called me today, she mentioned that, and I spoke to Mark Davis and solicitor, and I did just draft a simple, one sentence that captures it, that was the original text. "At the lessor may, at the lessor's sole discretion, terminate said lease in the event that leasing does not make improvements in accordance with Building and Housing Codes, as well as Section 504 of the Federal Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and make the building accessible to the handicap, and occupy the building for its intended use within," I indicated "two years from the start of the lease," but of course, that's up to the council.
Yeah, that would give them some time to be able to fundraise some money, and would also give the town the ability, should they not be able to fundraise, and having read a memo from Ms. Eastman today, it seemed like they have some real good players in place from the board that have the ability and have the prior experience in fundraising, so hopefully they will be able to exceed their goals. But just in case they don't, it protects the town to have such language installed in that lease.
Okay, Mark, so this is like a performance addendum to the lease?
Yes, the Historic Society actually suggested that, but when they proposed the lease, it was in a preamble and not in the text, but I think they acknowledge that if they don't.
That makes sense, that's my concern, and they don't want to tie up a property for 25 years. I mean, we may have, you know, a guy committed a European market.
I think the way it's drafted, you can probably determine, you know, find him in default on day one because it doesn't meet the building code, but this makes it clear they have two years.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few questions. So we voted back in August unanimously to approve the research period, to look into the possibility of the Historic Society going into this building. And during that, that item, we discussed what would be happening in the meantime. So, the idea was that we're going to give them about 18 months to do research, fundraise, or look into fundraising, and come back with a finalized plan. So I was actually surprised to see this on the agenda now, because, you know, we voted back in August, and it doesn't look like anything's really been done concretely in the meantime. I was expecting a report, presentation, some, something to kind of substantiate, you know, the time. So, you know, the doctor is up here, so we definitely, if you have any input on that, that's fine. But the letter that we received last July stated that Phase One would begin after that approval in August, and that was to include detailed structural analysis and cost estimates, detailed plan of use for the space, publicity via newspapers and meetings to determine the level of public support, and then assessment of fundraising and grant possibilities. So, I'm all for this eventually happening, I think it's a good use of the space. However, it doesn't look to me like the work has been done in this time period, but if there's, if there's information that I'm not aware of, that's fine.
Well, I can assure you that from my perspective, being on the property, they've had numerous architects and engineers visit the property since that time period to do inspections. I'll let Dr. O'Neill, you know, speak for the organization, but they've had, again, numerous people come and go to inspect the property, and I think, again, the biggest point here is they can't, they can't continue with the fundraising on a one-year, a one-year lease without some type of long-term commitment.
Yeah, no, I'm not advocating for the one-year lease. The long-term lease makes sense, we're going to put hundreds of thousands of dollars into it, to renovate it. However, it doesn't seem like, to me, like we're in a rush to sign a lease, and there should be a process, because every piece of land in Narragansett is valuable, no matter what it is. If we're going to sign off in 25 years to an organization that is not part of the town, it's a private nonprofit, that does a great job, and that I, you know, I'm completely with their mission, we should think about what we're signing off on. You know, we did, Sunset Farm is an example of this. I believe that's a free lease, I mean, I think that they'd be a pretty rough.
They're paying us $25 a year, though, these guys.
What's that?
They're at least paying us $25 a year.
I thought it was a dollar a year, actually.
Is it a dollar, that was 25?
My point is that there's no reason to be in a rush. As council members, we should see the due diligence before we sign off on property for 25 years. So, with that said, I also see some issues with the lease itself. So, I know that in the letter, there was a statement, this is the letter from Dr. O'Neill and Shirley, from July, that says, "In the future, if the Historic Society fails as an organization, we would agree that the building will be returned to the town ownership," which is great, however, that's not explicitly stated in the lease, and we know that if it's not in the lease, it doesn't exist, just like the PNS for other properties that we deal with. Also, there's a, there is a line about the town taking ownership of maintenance of the grounds, which would cost the town money to do, whether it's our DPW.
We're doing that now, we maintain the property.
That's fine, but, you know, other examples, let me, the South County Museum is a different situation, and my understanding is that they maintain those grounds.
That's correct.
Okay, so, that's something to think about as well. Again, I want, I think it's a great idea, I said that in August, and I think that now. However, we have a responsibility to do it the right way, and we should see some information on how this is going to happen, in my opinion, before we give away later 25 years, so. So, with that said, I would, I'll make a motion to continue as we go through this process and revisit it once there's more information.
Well, I think, I think we could, uh...
Is there a second for that? Okay, go ahead.
I think we can take care of this now. Mark, how about if we do five-year blocks, keep the two-year performance and do five-year blocks up to 25 years, and I think that would satisfy Jesse's...
Patrick, before we can get there, can we have Dr. O'Neill comment and give us that there has been a lot of work done by architects on that property? Maybe this will help answer some of Jesse's questions.
Yeah, excuse me, obviously you bring up good questions. Let me just sort of digress for a second. We've sincerely tried our best to bring this forward, but you have to understand what the process has been for us, is that we've had nothing but great support from Steve at Parks and Recreation, but we also had to make a presentation on a couple of occasions to the Parks and Recreation Commission. They don't meet every week, and so we kind of go back and forth there. We also obviously had to speak with the planning department. We also had to speak with our new town manager, which we had waited a while to do, because that was a process that was taking place. Then, what we had to do was we had to get a contract drafted, and once we did that, we then had to have a lawyer, Matt Callahan, review it, and then we had to go ahead and submit that contract to the town's lawyer, and that took us at least two months for that to be reviewed. In the meantime, we've had three architects there, we've had three different proposals, we've had three different builders there who've given us proposals, but we can't go forward with anything until we have an agreement from the town. And Patrick, I know you're sincere in trying to compromise, but you have to be aware of the fact that when you're raising money, and particularly where it comes on a grant basis, a lot of entities don't want to deal with you if you don't have a long-term lease on a property. In other words, is that a five-year lease sounds like a nice accommodation, but it really doesn't work, and one of the funding agencies actually specifically said that if you had less than a 25, preferably a 50-year lease, they wouldn't even look at your grant proposal. So, the process is exhaustingly and agonizingly slow on your side, not our side. We've been doing our best in terms of approaching people and going through the steps within the town to kind of reach this point, postponing it. We already lost a $10,000 grant that we were going to get from Preserve Rhode Island if this had been accomplished in January, when it was proposed most likely to take place, that this would reach this august body, but was delayed because the town lawyer was involved with a number of other issues that the town has legally, and wasn't able to take a look at it. So, I guess I'm just hoping you understand that this has very little to do with our lack of effort in terms of moving the process forward. Believe me, it doesn't. As a aside, I just, you know, I just want to increase your enthusiasm by saying, I don't know whether you know, but there are a few different windmill buildings in Rhode Island. We have one in Narragansett, it's on my home on 560 Ocean Road, because up until the '50s, there was a big, beautiful windmill on top of the tower that's on the edge of our house, and that went down with one of the hurricanes. So that's our, our other windmill building here in Narragansett. There's a windmill building in Jamestown, everybody's aware of. There's two in Middletown, one of which got moved from Portsmouth. Those all have blades. Then there is something that a lot of people aren't aware of, it's called the Longfellow Windmill Building in East Greenwich, and that one never had blades on it, and looks very much like ours, the town's, and that actually was owned by Longfellow, and he wrote the windmill. So, the windmill building, even though it was only built in 1935, that's already 85 years ago, has some history, has Bosworth's alley, as it's called in the land records for the town. You know, it has the potential of being another iconic structure when it's restored to the exterior shingle. It has the potential for adding to the extraordinary appeal that Narragansett has as a tourist destination, because it will include Narragansett's history, its archives, there'll be all kinds of demonstrations there, and it's an opportunity to take a building which clearly needs help, and Narragansett Historical Society needs a place for its archives and for these demonstrations. So, I think it's a special place, we all think it's a special place, and believe me, I'm just pleading the case that any seeming delays had almost nothing to do with us.
In terms of the, this amendment that Jim and Jill and Dr. O'Neill spoke about, so we'll need an amendment for that, and we'll reread, especially because Janet is filling in for Terry tonight, so we want to make sure we're very clear what we put into an amendment on that. So, the, I think everyone on this building, what's important to remember is that the building was going to be destroyed, right? So the property's currently maintained around it, the land around it, it's next to the Parks and Rec, it's maintained by the Parks and Rec Department, so that's not going to change, but if, if this doesn't get off the ground, likely this building will be destroyed, destroyed. So if this project doesn't work with the Historical Society, which we wish them the best of luck with their efforts, because they have been looking patiently for a home, and we've been trying to find a place for them. So, any other comments before we get to that?
Just to add to that, as far as the lease itself, in reviewing the South County Museum lease that Jesse brought up, it is very, very similar. The only things that were different were, as Jesse pointed out, the upkeep, the upkeep of the outdoors, the South County Museum does do that upkeep, however, it's a much larger property than this one. There are a couple other things, just three small things, is the electric, I don't know if there's a separate electric hookup, Steve, to that, there is, Dr. O'Neill saying, so that would also then need to be also included, that the upkeep for the electric, for the water, for the sewer would go to the Historic Society, and then that would make the lease very similar to what we have in the South County Museum.
And anyone, Patrick, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just had another question from Mark, sorry, Mark. Can you, can you put in five-year blocks, it would be satisfactory to grant institutions? I mean, some verbiage in there that we could, you know, do a 25-year lease with five-year options? Something that can be worked out?
We can draft anything you want.
I mean, I don't know what these agencies...
Yeah, the doctors should care for that.
Yeah, I mean, you suggest that they wouldn't go for that, I guess.
I can tell you already, there are two of them that don't want to do that. As a matter of fact, there's some of the, I have to tell you this, there are some of the agencies we've already approached, sort of on a preliminary basis, and to be honest with you, because of situations like that, they won't even accept a grant from the town.
They want a minimum of 25 years.
Yeah, they don't want to deal with...
That's what it is, that's what it is, so what provision do you suggest?
That's just all.
Well, the way that provision stands, and I don't want to talk about it till we do the amendment, does someone, go ahead, anybody?
Jill, just a point of clarification, they're already obligated for the utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Does somebody want to make that amendment and then make it the exact language for it that we can put in the record for the clerk?
Jim, did you want to read what you had written, or Mark, or Jim had written?
Somebody wants to move to amend with the language, and then if I could get a second, that would be great, and then we'll just fill in the language.
I'd like to move to amend with an amendment that Mark was going to read.
Is there a second? All right, and this is the language, go ahead.
I would suggest that it be put in Section 7, Prior Termination, as maybe a separate paragraph at the end of the section. I'll read it, all right, Janet, you can type in a certain... It says, "At the lessor may, at the lessor's sole discretion, terminate said lease in the event that the lessy does not make any, does not make improvements in accordance with the Building and Housing Codes, as well as Section 504 of the Federal Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and make the building accessible to the handicap, and occupy the building for its intended use within two years." I just want to make sure, but I think we defined the term effective date, I want to make sure.
I just have a problem.
Wait a minute, just wait a minute.
Within two years from the commencement of the lease.
Could you read that for us one more time, so everybody can hear it, please? Would you mind?
"At the lessor may, at the lessor's sole discretion, terminate said lease in the event that the lessy does not make improvements in accordance with the Building and Housing Codes, as well as Section 504 of the Federal Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and make the building accessible to the handicap, and occupy the building for its intended use within two years from the commencement of the lease."
All right, and that was made by Jill and seconded by Patrick, Janet. All right, any discussion on that? That, it looks like it may satisfy some of your five-year block issues, because if they don't, if they don't do their thing, right, then they really have to go, but go ahead.
Nothing, I mean, as long as they move forward, I mean, they don't have to have everything done, I mean, it's just as long as they're moving forward expectations.
Correct. The way that's drafted, and of course, the lessy and the lessor can always come to an agreement, but the contract provides that within that two-year timeframe, as the amendment reads, they need to be in that building, it's going to be, it's going to be done, ready for its intended use.
Two years?
The district commission thinks that's reasonable.
Is that enough time for it, two years?
Why don't you come up to, yeah, I, so we're discussing this amendment right now, right?
Without voicing excessive optimism, it's possible, but by that time, we certainly should be well on our way with pledges towards the amount of money we need, whether we actually have the money in hand at that point, and all the projects completed.
You want to make it a three-year?
No, I think that it's good to have that pressure on us. Our expectation is, is that we would have to come back and plead our case, saying, hey, you know, look, we're three-quarters of the way there, we've already got this done.
Three to the five.
We would basically be reapplying. And I also want you to know that we've already spoken with Gates Agency, and this is set to be enacted, I believe, March 1st.
I think the way it's drafted is February 1st.
I think we would do March 1st, because where we are in the morning.
Only changing, the lease as drafted, I believe, is in February 1st.
Okay, well, I'm not sure we can do that, because we're already in February 14th.
There'll have to be amendment.
It says the first, it says March mark at the top.
The most recent copy is March.
Yeah.
Yeah, the version I have is in February.
So, what I was implying is, is that we have a $2 million... So what I was implying is that we have a $2 million policy for liability and that will be enacted in place as of March 1st, but we leave that on the contract or the lease.
Right, anyone else want to go?
This is just the amendment.
Yes, Ms. Conmery.
Hi, I just want to make a comment that just happened like.
Can you use the microphone for our clerk, please? And name and address, please, Ms. Conmery.
Leia, L-E-A-I-A, Palmyra, P-A-L-M-Y-R-I. And till a month ago, I was owner of 94 Central Street, Narragansett, Rhode Island. And I have a profound love for this town, for the history of this town. I lived here for the last 22 years and I saw different changes, but I think it's a wonderful, wonderful town. The comment I want to make is, my husband took five years in order to be able to bring back structure, 94 Central Street, which is right now is one of the iconic, well-preserved structures in Narragansett. But five years. In my opinion, in two years, nobody can do what you expect them to do. Because you deal with fundraising. First of all, that you have to write the grants. You have to be able to have fundraises. I'm also a member of the hospital, the South County Hospital, and I know the effort which takes in order to bring money, to be able to bring those kind of money. But from the moment when you have money, you have to deal with the builders, with the contractors, with the architects, with the plumbers, the electricians. It's impossible, in my opinion, to expect to have at the point, two years at the point what you like to be. I think five years would be more normal, really. I, right now, I try to fix up a basement. And the basement, in order to get the basement, the parson and everything, what I want to do, I already put five months in. And it's not, I didn't get the material. All of this construction, particularly when you deal with such an old structure, where you always have some things happen, I, that is just a suggestion I have.
Thank you.
To give them a little bit more. And please try to save that because there are so very few pieces left in this town. And I lived in Jamestown, so I know very well the mill and they spent a lot of time, a lot of money. They have a historical group. And this group, the history of Narragansett is so impressive and can be done so much with. Thank you very much for listening to me.
All right, is there any other comment on this amendment? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now on the underlying motion with that amendment, is there any other commentary?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a final comment on this. The speaker makes a good point. I think there is a lot of unknown here. It's kind of impossible to know how long it's going to take to build this out, to fundraise, which is why, I'll go back to my original point. If the work was done on the front end to present a report or a presentation on what it's going to take, estimates, plans, meetings to determine if it was supported in town, we would have a better idea. And then we could build that timeline into the lease. So I'm still a little bit surprised because last time we spoke, the timeline was up to 18 months. So the rush from my side kind of is a little bit out of nowhere. You know, and I'll reiterate, the letter that we received in July says that that phase, which is, you know, the points that I outlined, detailed structural analysis, detailed plan of use, meetings, fundraising assessments. If those were done and the conditions proved to be positive, we request that ownership of the building be transferred. So again, this is just, I'm just going off of what was discussed and what was, you know, kind of agreed upon when we did the original vote. Without that being done, for me, it's irresponsible to grant this land to an outside organization without knowing these facts. So I think this is probably going to pass and I wish the society luck moving forward. I hope it works out well, but I'm going to have to vote no and I would prefer to continue rather than to vote yes now. That's my stance on it.
Is there anyone else from the council? All right, again, the property is in disrepair. I think it's important to note that. It would be either destroyed or this option. And if that doesn't go anywhere, then, meaning if the Historical Society is not successful, it's going to revert back to the town. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion approved four to one. So good luck, everybody. We're going to turn to a public hearing decision. It's only a motion to schedule. It's a motion to schedule a public hearing for amendment to Narragansett's Code of Ordinances addressing recreational vehicles and residential zoning districts. Is there a motion?
Some of them are moved.
Is there a second?
Can I get one?
Okay. So we'll record that as Jesse and then Patrick, okay? The date we're looking at for this is April 6th at 8:00 PM. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I'll say, because I still get a lot of emails about this, it's a very minor amendment to the ordinance. What it does is increase the height for recreational vehicles from nine feet to 15 feet and the length from 32 feet to 44 feet. There is nothing else in this amendment, as far as I know. So that's the only intent. Nothing to do with storage of boats, no changes, no additional restrictions. It's just a length and height increase.
So the other thing, the only thing I wanted to add to that is I reached out to Chief Partington today to ask about how large our largest fire truck is, to try to get an idea about this height. So our largest ladder truck is just under 12 feet, 42 feet long. So what this amendment is doing is asking that a vehicle be larger than our largest fire truck.
Yeah, so we've done some research on this and the ordinance is so old that nine feet was a viable height for an RV. Nowadays, you really can't even, no one buys an RV that's nine feet tall. I think the average height is like 13 something. So that's really the reason for this, because it's just trying to be realistic. By making it nine feet, you're essentially outlawing RVs to be stored properly because nobody has an RV that's smaller. So that's the, again, the intent is to allow people to store their RVs.
All right, again, that's for April 6th at 8:00 PM. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. A motion to refer the draft ordinance to the planning board for review and recommendation.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Sorry?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Return to the regular agenda. Item 17 is a motion to approve and authorize the Narrow River Preservation Association to install a webcam receiver on the Narrow River Kayak Office Building subject to state and local regulations.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion. I'm going to ask, Steve Wright, you can come forward if you have any questions. I think the explanation on this was self-explanatory. Any questions from the council? Any comments from the public? I think you're okay then, unless there's, is there anything you want to say? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 18 is a motion to allocate $10,000 to VFW Post 91916 in Wakefield, Rhode Island to support its efforts on behalf of Narragansett's military veterans.
Some of them. Second.
Discussion. This item comes from Rick. Rick, why don't you go ahead for us?
So again, the VFW post that's in Wakefield, we have quite a few Narragansett members who use it. The building hadn't been used for a long period of time. And then there was people who, again, are veterans, who people started wanting to go there and got some donations so that they got a handicap ramp in the front. And the building needed a tremendous amount of work. It needed a tremendous amount of work. So again, the work takes funding. And we have money allocated to be able to do this. Last year, we gave $10,000 out of contingency. So again, I know Tiger Patrick is here.
Yeah, I was going to ask them to come forward to give us a brief summary.
If you would come forward because he.
If our friend's in the VFW, if you're going to work. Thank you for coming tonight.
I think all this is my time to.
Yes, perfect. Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, so my name is Joe Patrick. Many people know me as Tiger Patrick. I am commander of VFW Post 916. I'd like to first thank my assistant in helping putting together this PowerPoint presentation in the flash. Thank you so much for my, my officer who are younger, our parents, who were creating this are on vacation. And so this was the last of anything. So this will not be as organized as normally. Or it looks like better than I would have thought. So thank you. You can go to the next slide. So I'm starting here to, I wanted to remind myself to thank you all for Narragansett, for proclaiming yourselves to be Purple Heart Town as part of the initiative that we started. I'm proud to come back to you today to say that all towns from Westerly along the Route 1 and Route 4 corridor to East Greenwich, all six towns are all Purple Heart towns, enabling us to now go before the State Assembly that Carol Mackenzie is leading that charge to have that named or renamed. The Rhode Island Purple Heart Trail is part of the national endeavor to have a Purple Heart Highway or Trail nationwide as a destination spot for veterans and recognizing the sacrifices made by Purple Heart veterans. The reason why I have this up there, we recently changed the name of our post. There's a picture there, a shadow box that's been on our wall in that building, in our building since June 6th, 1955. That's William Grant Ornia who was killed in Guata Cana and received and was awarded posthumously a Congressional Medal of Honor in Purple Heart. On August 28th, 1943, his family, including my grandfather, who was his brother, received, the articles you see there, including the flag that draped his casket from Guata Cana back to Pearl Harbor where he is laid to rest now overlooking the USS Arizona and what they call the Punch Hole, along with the medals and the actual write-ups of the awards along with the Rhode Island Cross, which is presented by the governor for gallantry and was usually in conjunction with another medal. I wanted to, is it okay to approach both the chiefs on here? I took off to bring to the assembly the Purple Heart and the Congressional Medal of Honor to show them, and I don't know how many of you have had a chance to actually hold a Purple Heart or a Congressional Medal of Honor, but because of this endeavor, I want you to feel the weight. You give the tennis significance. I'll make them available to make the blood happen. So a quick thing about the Purple Heart and then I'll get on to the presentation because I know people have other things to vote on today. This Purple Heart, as it's constituted now, was designed by General Arthur in 1938. He was the first recipient of that medal. Interestingly enough, how a general can make that happen. But when Germany surrendered in 1945, the Allies of the United States figured they were going to have a big battle on their hands to take Japan and to occupy it. So they ordered a million Purple Hearts to be made. And they went out to plan and I guess they had the project progressed well enough that they used two atomic bombs to try to deter the threat from happening. The war ended. The United States government had over a million, a million Purple Hearts on their hands. And they smartly decided to use them incrementally throughout the years. So Purple Hearts that were rewarded in 1946, including that one in 1943, all the way through Korean War, Vietnam War, Jesus Storm where I was, and the current GY, Global War Terror, post Pad 11 veterans who received them, they were all made in 1945. And so it's pretty significant. It's the heaviest award. Anyway, the reason why I mention that is this Purple Heart endeavor is really digging off. And thank you so much for being a part of that. Moving on, and that all came through our little post right here in 916. The demographics of our posts is we have 20% of our membership are Narragansett residents. I think three more are, but they're snowbirds. They come back only in the winter. So that makes 23 or 104 now. Okay, so this is, the construction's based on the $10,000. We also received $5,000 from the town of South Kingston and another from students who's asking, they have extra money. So we were able to spend, we had to spend it right away, another $3,500. This is the south-facing side of our building. We had to replace those windows. Because they're close to the ground, they have to be a certain tempered glass. They were $400 bucks just for the glass alone. But I wanted to show you that because all of that stuff before was just wood. It probably had not been changed since 19. Steve, was it 1986 to 85?
Okay.
Now, so we're talking in the 70s when all this stuff was changed. And so go ahead to the next slide, Dan. This was after our first ripping down panel that had been on there probably since Father Knows Masters on TV. Sadly, we had a lot of termite damage and we were concerned that that might have affected up onto the top floor. This is downstairs in the lower area. What it did was somehow they sprayed something and they stopped it, but they didn't fix it. So that's all rotting wood. There's no more wood on the first floor, pretty much at all, except on our bar. You can go ahead to the next one. You can see we changed all of the framing, I think you call it. I'm not a construction guy. I was just a dumb laborer. And these were installed by carpet issue. If you go to the next slide. Of the $18,000 that we raised, only $2,000 were not spent in this project on materials. All of the work that was done by skilled craftsmen, including electricians and all of that, it was volunteer time. So the bank for the block was tremendous. You know, I think I heard something mentioned earlier, when you start working on a building, it's built in 1931. There are layers. You just finally start this piece to be replaced and plan on. These guys are local, 330, they're going to come back and help us again when we need it. Kind of into rock and roll. So that was the kind of thing. Anyway, so the volunteer side is out. This is how we look when I taught it like this. Now, that's how our post looks downstairs now with the new walls. Every year, we do a drive through. About 150 senior veterans who live in nursing homes or are shot-ins nearby here in Washington County. This past year, we had 154, including Narragansett folks as well. Breaking comments, Scott, Cheryl, Alex, and then one on Route 4, who all service by us as well as veterans that we have that live in Bristol Home. Go ahead to the next slide. These are the first gentlemen who received gifts. Some of you may know the faces up there, but these men all served in Vietnam together on a quantum and they've been meeting and having breakfast at our post since 1978. Most of them are in their 80s. That's Top Longton in the middle. He was a squadron commander. They were a helicopter group flying in Vietnam, flying soldiers with weapons, wounded in and out of the combat zones. They're a tight-knit band of brothers and they're one of the reasons why I really wanted to to give this post back to them and make it a healthy place for every Saturday at 5:30. Coffee's on, the ovens are on, and they make breakfast each other. It's a great time. Go ahead, next slide. Okay, so one of the things I wanted to do was be outreach in the community. So we put up a mini free library. That's mini, mini houses up there. And I read about a year ago about a woman in Ohio who knitted hats and socks and things, warmest items. Put them in a bag and put them on our fence outside our house. And it became a very popular destination, a way to help the community anonymously who might need just a little bit of a help. And we decided to implement that. That was about two weeks before Christmas. And as of this morning, I counted, we have given away 150 bad items just since December. So the community outreach is pretty awesome. We have the senior center, it's all stuff. We have people donate bags and things all the time. And so the demand is being met by the community helping each other. And it's a great, great thing. We run sales incentives for that. Go ahead to the next. Okay, so where your money went, this is, both of our bathrooms are unisex now. We have one that's handicap bathroom. We have one that's handicap bathroom and that's one of our doors. We have the Sunday school now in our in our building. We've been renting every Sunday. We have a church that's common sense. I fixed up downstairs. We now have a Sunday school for about eight to ten kids, depending on the day. Go ahead to the next slide. This is my handicap bathroom. I've taken a wheelchair myself and rolled around in there. Everything works and there's plenty of room to do that. And go to the next slide. This was a must-have for two of my members' grandchildren. And there's a changing table. So we put a changing table in there to appeal to the younger veteran whose older kids could be peeing in the bathroom and they could be changing with the supplement on the changing table. Go ahead to the next. Okay, so this is part of one of our projects that we're working on now. Those are our stairs that have been there forever. They are very steep and they are barrier for our elder veterans. The demographic age-wise by for our posts is we are sixty-seven percent of our posts is over the age of seventy. And so it's daunting. And in fact, the folks who come in the church every Sunday, they either come upstairs or they hang out downstairs. They don't go up and down. And so we are looking into getting a stair lift or one of those that takes you up. But unfortunately, go to the next slide please, Dan. It's an L shape and it actually they're trying to sell me two different stair masters, wherever that tool is called. The price range is between four thousand to eight thousand depending. So we're still working on that. And so it's it's something that I think we need and it's a priority item. Go ahead to the next one. Okay, so this is another one of our donated projects. I was excited. It should have been in there, but it's the standings. Who are a local business. I went to school with guy standing. We're both in our mid to late fifties. Their father was a Vietnam veteran, Wilbur Standen. Some of you are locals who know him. They wanted to give back to the post and honor veterans. And so they for free put the stones that are on the top half of that in there. Those are actual field stones and not, you know, nearly buy at Walmart. And they go and handpick them out and put them in and they did that for free on the side. On top of that, for I think it was eighteen hundred dollars, they capped and sealed in our chimney from the outside. One of the problems, you'll see in the next picture, I hope, water damage coming in from outside had to be stopped and they took care of it. And that's part of the problem that we need to fix now. Where you see there, that is on the northeast corner of the building. And so the storm, every storm's coming in, hits the wall of the chimney going out. So it kind of comes down like a rain cloud. There was a lot of damage underneath to be fixed. And now we just have to pull the floorboards up to try to fix that location there. Go ahead to the next one. Okay, so our floor is basically like this floor, where the big difference is we don't have a subfloor. It's basically these boards are nailed or glued to fours every eighteen inches, give or take, which causes a problem. Probably back then, that saved them a couple hundred dollars back in nineteen thirty-one. But it's caused a problem now. So because of the rain coming off the chimney, that area where you see the podium, it's way too bump. And it's, you can't put chairs really on there. You can't put tables on there. And so we're working on it. I'm not a floor guy. Steve, my colleague here, Tom, right from the post, past leader man there. We're looking at it. And we're very cognitive because time is tight, you know, as far as finances and all of that. I appreciate everyone's love. But we really need it because we want to open up this space to be able to have other groups come and use it for conferences, et cetera. I told you at the beginning, we changed the name of our post to William Brent Fornier. We're rebranding the building as the Washington County Veteran Resource Center. And we now house the American Legion Post Thirty-nine. We host the VVA Local Chapter Two Twenty-three and the Washington County Veterans Association. We're trying to get it back to Marine Corps lead. There were two. One was out of post. And the other was out in County Wee, the post of Westerly, and they've been struggling. So we're trying to combine them and bring them back. What we lost, Marigazet President Joe Rosska, I don't know if you remember him, great guy, Iwo Jima Speller. He's a great guy. He was the glue that held a couple of these veteran groups together. And you can't replace that. We're trying. And so we're getting, we're getting better. But he was a good man. His picture is like the fifth one on the right on that bottom shelf. A little behind we got there. So we're just looking for just continued support to be able to support the veteran and the family members going forward. Go ahead, Dan. We should have more pictures. Okay, okay, so this is us at Taro. We're really big in outreach. These are freshmen students from the art program at Taro. They wanted to meet veterans and individually they have reports of some significant military persons in the in the past. And then they wanted to meet some boot on the ground veterans and that's where we came in. And so that was, I understand I'll be doing that.
Steve, did we get attitude?
Marigazet, who can I go? This is my first year doing Marigazet at the high school. Go ahead to the next one. Last month, because our post is turning around, I got a white hat because we had a brave year at our post, meaning we're like in the higher echelon, the different posts in the state. We were asked to participate in a program where we were given a grant by National Federal, National VFW to send two students from Rhode Island to a conference for student veterans, a veteran student organization. And so last month, they came to our meeting. We had about fifteen URI students. Most of them lived in Marigazet. I did ask. They ranked, that is probably the reason why you guys have the red stippers on campus. That's what I'm saying now then. But they're all great and they're all combat veterans. And so we're gonna get a couple of them to join us. The first one with the long hair, looks like he plays for a brunch band. His name is Kyle. He's gonna be on next class coming in. And so we're really excited. Because the place is cleaner and brighter and people want to hang out there more, so it's more of a destination spot. I think hopefully we have at least one more slide. Yes. Okay, so this is a spot that's very sacred to me. We have a BSO visit, a veteran service officer. Basically, this person is trained and is accredited to be served, to serve as a legal advocate, almost like a lawyer, within the VA to help them file claims and with claims. We have a BSO visit every month. This is Rachel. She's coming again this Saturday. Last month, she met with eleven veterans over, it was supposed to be for a three-hour period, but she stayed nine to five. And she serves all eleven, including eight brand new claims. That's huge, huge. And so she is their person from now on. It doesn't sound like a missed out visit. So her time is spent with them greatly over her period, helping them get the benefits that they receive. And so that includes Marigazet veterans as well. And she's coming this Friday and tomorrow I have to check and see how many of you are coming. If there's more than six that have signed up already, we're gonna get another BSO to make sure we get, we meet the need. I hope we have a hundred that come. There's never too many veterans. And so all of this was made available to our veterans because of the grant that you all gave us. We were able to do weight work construction, you know, a little beer, some pizza. I was able to get some quality help, kind of a thing. But they all wanted help because they could see what they'd immediately turn around of what that really has become. It's amazing. And so I think that's it. Do you have another honor? Because I'm waiting on you for now. Anyway, I'm sorry I'm not being clear or anything, but it's it's very important. I want you to realize that it's not wasting money. We're not going out and just blowing it. We're really making every penny work. And so.
Thanks. No, that's great. We might have questions. So thank you for that presentation.
I had a question. Yeah, what's South Kingsdale going up here?
We put in a, we asked for five thousand from them.
Five thousand?
Eighty-three million dollars.
I'm on board. I'm on board, Patrick, giving you this.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I totally support veterans. I just think some payment should match us.
I do too.
Dollar for dollar.
Well, let's have some beers after the parade on Thursday, you know, while we have the Memorial Day parade. In fact, I hope you all go because we are, made a tradition where we present to the grand marshals a plaque and make a little thing out of it because they're all aging veterans. So we really wanna honor that of the old stock families.
Get South Kingston on board and I'm okay with this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you. What a great presentation. And we can't thank our veterans enough. I spoke with the commander before the meeting started and, you know, hey, I'm someone who's known how to all the words to Marine Corps hymns. It's been four years. We celebrate November tenth Marine Corps birthday. So salute to you on that. The one thing for me right now is we're just getting into our budget season and this is so early. I hope that we have all ten thousand dollars and I hope that Patrick is guilting right now South Kingstown to producing five thousand more to match us. But at this point in time, I'm hoping that the town, the council might, might move just to continue this so that we can understand all the dollars that we have available for our town and for all the great organizations such as yours. And and hopefully we will have all ten thousand dollars to give to you. But it's just, it's just a little early right now. But I can't thank you enough and everyone that that serves in his end of VFW. What a great presentation you gave us.
Our finance director has told us that the ten thousand is something that we have from our general fund. So we can do that. And then in our budget season this year, I think it would be wise for us to put in a line item. Steve, that might be something we want to think about. It probably would come from that budget or maybe the discretionary budget for future budgets.
We actually, Patty Russo spoke to me about that.
Yes.
We hit, because this is the really last big push that I have and vision having anything to do with the post unless we get hit by lightning or something will put up solar power, which we can probably give mostly free. But I was thinking, we talked about maybe a couple of thousand dollars a year that we would just come to help us do whatever we need to do. We always have needs. It seems like I can do a lot more grant writing or that sort of fundraising. And I'm not really good at it, but it's important. And the impact that we have in our community is, is really being felt, I believe.
Is there anyone else?
So anyway.
Go ahead.
So this money here would go to, obviously, getting that second, I call it the second floor, but it's really the first floor in the basement. This would help with the other monies that they've raised and people have donated to get hopefully this project almost completed. They may, it may take even a little bit more money as they dig into it. It's the unexpected. So for me, I put this in because we have the money. I'd like to see this move forward now. And then later, like Patrick said, is even if we only budget a couple of thousand because they may be at a point where they'll have smaller projects. And it would be easier for us to put in a smaller budget for them. But for right now, you know, I'm on board with this. I'd like to get this motion moving forward, get them the money and let them get that first floor almost to the completion. And then they can use that upstairs. As you see in those pitches, they use the basement more than anything.
We can't use the upstairs because if we spill a drink, it ruins the drop ceiling underneath. It literally just goes right to the sieve. It's crazy, but it'll.
Right. Anyone from the public? All right. Thank you. Thank you also for Steve for being here. I'm all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Motion approved four to zero. Item number nineteen is a motion to appoint one member from the town council to serve on the negotiations team for collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees Rhode Island Council Ninety-four Local Eleven Seventy-nine.
I move to point Greg Lima.
Is there a second?
Who are you pointing?
She moves her point Greg Lima.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item twenty is a motion to appoint one member from the town council to serve in the negotiations team for collective bargaining with the Rhode Island Labor's District Council Local Ten Thirty-three.
I'll move to appoint Natalie Anex.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-one is a motion to adopt a resolution opposing the TCI gas tax on the transportation and climate initiative.
Okay, this one's mine. I am officially pulling this. My sources over at the State House say that this doesn't have any length. And, you know, we've been kind of sensitive about resolutions. I don't want to turn this into a big climate change discussion tonight. So I am pulling this.
All right, thank you. Item number twenty-one is withdrawn, all right, by the sponsor of the item. Janet. Item twenty-two is a motion to approve a resolution in support of legislation to establish an Ocean State Climate Adaptation and Resiliency Fund.
Subdued.
Is there a second?
Second. Just hear them on.
All right, discussion.
So I have a resolution.
For yes, luckily we got a resolution in this meeting. So this is a resolution for the town of Marigazet to approve, which is in support of the Ocean State Climate Adaptation and Resilience Fund. Oscar for short. So what it is, is a establishment of a fund that would be used to basically grant funds to cities and towns when needed to implement projects that would adapt the infrastructure. Basically, it's kind of like built-in insurance to deal with climate change-related issues, erosion, that sort of thing. The way that this fund would be created is a very, very, very small fractional, fraction of a penny gas tax. It is one tenth of a penny per gallon. Before I get into more details, I would like to invite Jed Thorpe up to the podium from Save the Bay. He can give probably more accurate information than I can. Thanks, Jed.
Sure. Thank you. Jed Thorpe with Save the Bay. As most of you probably know, our mission is to improve and protect Marigazet Bay. Within that mission, we have three priorities: improving water quality, ensuring public access, and improving coastal habitats. Climate change has an impact on all three of those. So that's why it's a major concern for us at Save the Bay.
The intent, as Jesse mentioned, with the Ocean State Climate Adaptation and Resilience Fund legislation would be to create a permanent, dedicated, long-term source of funding that cities and towns could tap into to complete adaptation projects, infrastructure projects that are related to the impacts of climate change. Climate change is already here. Sometimes I hear people talk about climate change like it's something that's going to happen in the future, but the impacts are already being felt. We see them on a daily basis and those impacts are only gonna get more severe over time. Currently, most cities and towns have no line item in the budget, no dedicated source of funding for climate change projects. So this would, in our opinion, fill a need that's badly needed at the town and city level. As Jesse mentioned, the way that the fund would be created would be through an increase on some. Let me take a step back. Currently, there's a, there's a fee that's assessed on all petroleum products that are imported into Rhode Island by ship. It's called the oil spill prevention fee. It's five cents per barrel, forty-two gallons in a barrel, and that generates roughly two million dollars a year. This legislation would double that five cent fee, ten cents, and then put that additional five cents in a dedicated fund. It's a restricted receipt account outside of the general revenue fund that DDM would use to award grants to cities and towns for adaptation projects. There would be no match requirement. The way that the legislation is written, this would be direct grants to cities and towns. But these funds could be used as match if a municipality is seeking additional federal funding like through NOAA or National Official Wildlife Foundation, which sometimes has funds for climate-related projects. So that's a lot. I'll stop there. If you guys have questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yes, why is that question? So in reading this, didn't I read it would be one cent tax on every ten gallons of gas?
So again, it would be a nickel per barrel. So the way that breaks down, if the, if the industry were to just pass it all on to consumers, let's assume that they just, they pass that on to consumers. If you put ten gallons of gas in your car, it would be one additional penny. So one tenth of one cent per gallon.
And then wasn't it twenty-five cents on every two hundred and fifty gallons of home heating oil?
Again, if you extrapolate that math out, if you had a two hundred and fifty gallon delivery of home heating oil, it would be about twenty-five cents.
So for me, this is like putting another tax on something. Again, you're coming after the everyday people, especially people who travel. And then if they use home heating oil, it's an addition among the money. To me, it's like a tax. I've said it from day one. I'm not really in support of resolutions. I think this is something that should be at the state level. And let, you know, if you're interested in this or you're not interested in this, contact your state reps, your senators, and let them know how you feel. Because if you drive a lot and you use transportation, you're gonna be paying for this. And then again, I don't know how the money's gonna get to us first where Marigazet's gonna get whatever portion. going to get whatever portion and then South Kingston's going to get a portion of this. Wasn't there also a committee going to be formed to look at this?
Under the legislation, the Department of Environmental Management and C R M C would join the review applications that are submitted by municipalities.
Right. So again, I just don't know who would be really overseeing these funds and how Narragansett would benefit from a major amount of these funds. And I just have issues with these resolutions.
Sure, sure. So I guess I...
Yeah, it seems like items 21 and 22 were kind of in conflict then. Go ahead.
Well, you know, I've heard, I've heard that, I guess I've heard that, the criticism about this being a tax, but if, if not funded this way, what is the solution for funding much-needed climate adaptation projects? Because I agree, in a perfect world, this would be solved at the federal level or maybe at the state level. The state has yet to put funds aside for this purpose specifically within the general revenue fund. Our thinking was that this would be a creative way to fund these projects outside of a normal tax or outside of the general revenue fund. An additional benefit, I guess, of funding it in this way is that a lot of the petroleum that comes into Rhode Island is sent out to southeast Massachusetts, eastern Connecticut. This would be a way to essentially have people in southeast Mass and Connecticut help to fund climate adaptation projects in Rhode Island. So if not this way...
Thank you. I'm going to, yeah, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to some other council members and to the public. Anyone else from the council?
Do you want to go? I just have a couple more points to make. Something I neglected to mention at the beginning was that, so this resolution came from the chair of the Narragansett Land Trust. So I should mention that. Myself, Phil, and councillor Lawler are, we sit on that board as liaisons from the town council to the land trust. So this is a resolution that is supported by, I believe, the trust in general. If not, then the chair. Okay, so the chair himself. And Mr. Thorpe is right. It's a tax. It's a, almost, I mean, let's be realistic. It's almost an invisible tax if you're, we're talking a penny when you fill up here with 10 gallons.
Today.
No, it doesn't go up.
It will.
It can't go up. It can't automatically go up.
Not even the legislation that's written.
Yes. So you're either going to pay a penny more if it's passed on from the gas companies to the consumer, which isn't even guaranteed. They could absorb the cost or they could pass it on. So you pay a penny when you fill up 10 gallons or your property taxes go up when Narragansett does a $20,000 project to adapt to what's happening with erosion. So we're going to pay either way. It's going to be taxed either way. This is a way to build it into your normal flow of life without it affecting you as a big lump sum or a big increase with the property taxes. So again, it's happening. We have to do something to deal with it. This is a way to fund it that gets spread out through the state. And Narragansett is going to benefit disproportionately because our town is more on the water than other towns, so we're going to get more grants. So other towns are actually going to be paying more than we are proportioned to the way they're going to benefit. So I support it, especially living in Narragansett. I appreciate Jed for coming up and explaining it.
All right, is there anyone else? From the public? Richard?
Yes, certainly, you may have more information than I do looking at this, but we've had a long history of money flowing in and it flows out for different purposes, like the 9/11 emergency fund is an example of that. I just don't feel comfortable with our history in Rhode Island and probably nationwide that this really happens. And I don't know who controls OSCAR. I had an uncle OSCAR. You certainly wouldn't want to give him control of the money. And it just, to me, without the background information as to who controls what, really kind of preliminary to give approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I'm Tom.
Yes, Tom, I was on the chair of the land trust, but my purpose is for discussing this was the fact that I was on the board of Save the Bay for 20 years and president for three years. And the source of funding we're talking about here, I agree with Jesse. Jed, thank you for coming. Is to minimize, we're talking one action of .09 cents per gallon. It's five cents per barrel, which is 55 gallons of oil coming into the town. Last year or this year, we got, I think, a $9,000 grant from a C R M C or a D E M fund to study the relocation of the entrance to Middle Ridge property, which is Salangus' property. For one reason, which is the fact it gets flooded periodically and therefore we got money from C R M C, I think it was, D E M.
C R M C.
C R M C. Two, basically, would be to move the entrance for the study and we're going to be submitting a grant application to actually build the property next year. Funding available, of course. That source of money came from someplace, some federal grant or some D E M or some C R M C grant. What this, what we're recommending here is another source of information, another source of funding that would be available for coastal towns. Narragansett being basically probably more coastal than any time town because we're basically surrounded by water would be another source to be, where to get ahead of the curve. The issue is, is climate change, yes. The issue also is erosion, which is caused by tidal effects and also by storm surge effects. So if you can get ahead of the curve, you can, you can prevent damage before it happens. It's interesting to do so. And as Jed, I didn't realize the fact that the costs are socialized across all of southern New England. I was thinking it was kind of a good deal that if the town of Narragansett is benefiting what other people in England are providing, I thought that was kind of a good idea for us. But I think it's just a, it's a minor task. It gives towns like, like Narragansett another funding source to react to sea level rise. Now, if you want to see a sea level rise, go down to Middle Ridge. And if you look just north of the boathouse and you get out on the dirt parking lot there and you look to the north, you'll see there's a line of grasses which are no longer mowed and there's a little bit of a bubble in it. If you look right in front of that, you'll see a darker colored green. And what the darker colored green is, is a salt-specific species, no longer Kentucky bluegrass. It wasn't there five years ago. So what you're seeing is salt marsh migration into areas that didn't happen before. And what this one would do would be to help to encourage salt marsh migration because with that, it would significantly change the ecology of now river and Narragansett Bay. Any questions?
Thank you, Tom. I'm Stanley.
After hearing last week, we're looking at 11 feet. 11 feet. You know, we all didn't believe about this global warming. I was kind of skeptical myself. However, after seeing this month, we haven't seen a January like this. As long as I can remember, 1954 is when my memory kind of starts. And I don't see a January like this. So therefore, I believe global warming is coming and it is happening. So yes, we have to repair, but it's one cent. You know, I can visualize what we're going to need. Probably going to need a 20-foot rock wall out there to try and stop it from coming in. You know, one penny, I don't think it's going to do it. It's, it's a serious problem. My wife Mary remembers water waves coming up the street, up to Castle Street. I think it was a 54 hurricane. So we, we have a problem. We know that about it. This one cent's not going to do it. Again, taxes are with it, you know? One cent, it's going to go up exponentially as time goes on. It's going to go up. I'm not so sure. I want to see a gasoline tax going through the roof. I don't know what's the alternative. But I don't want to start another tax. It's kind of a hidden tax. We can't see it. Nobody, nobody sees it, experiences it until it comes up somewhere and say, why did you do it? Why didn't you stop it before it ballooned into a major fiasco? And then, of course, who administers? Who makes the decision whether we put a big rock wall out there, we cut some streets out? What do we do? We're going to buy the properties on the water to help the owners or something? I don't know. Who's going to make those decisions? Who's going to benefit? What contractor's going to benefit out there? Because they've got funds available here that are going to increase exponentially. So therefore, I don't think we ought to start here. We ought to, we need a careful analysis of what 11 feet is looking at and get a real price on what that's going to cause before we even institute. Let's find a price before we institute a tax. Let's see what the problem is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone from the council?
Yes, just briefly, Matt. Jesse had reached out to me, and I appreciate that, last week to ask if I would either join him in to co-sponsor this motion. And I said, although I do not personally believe that these issues belong at a town level of resolutions, that I would second it so we could have the discussion. No, I didn't do that today and I wanted to acknowledge that to Jesse to explain it a little bit. So that was, I believe, Tuesday, we had a discussion on the text message. And then Thursday, the council agenda came out with Mr. Murray's motion in opposition of the same type. So we had two opposing motions. And then today, we received an email from the town manager with a PowerPoint presentation prepared by Jesse to combat Patrick's motion. So it, to me, became political. This issue had been politicalized and it's, it's pointed to the fact that, yes, I do not believe that we should have resolutions. These issues belong at the state house. But further, it's to me something that I hope does not happen in November. There is an initiative that was put forward to make our nonpartisan town partisan again. And I believe issues like this is one reason why I'm hoping that that does not come to fruition in November, that we remain nonpartisan and we can talk about issues that we, as a council, can go on and implement and move forward in this town. Certainly, climate control does affect Narragansett, but we, as a town council, have no authority to move this forward. And I agree with Rick. If anyone feels, here feels that they, they should, feel free to contact our state reps. They're very, very accessible by the phone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, no, I just think that, I just would implore the general assembly to maybe think about finding ways to reduce rather than increase their already bloated budget. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, motion fails one to four. Our next item is open for public comment. This is where members of the community are able to come forward and talk about issues affecting the town. And please keep your comments to three minutes. All right, everyone. Richard?
I'm going to make one more plea that we all get together on two verses, a verse from each song. Working together, we can work it out. And you don't always get what you want. And I've mentioned this many times, no one has joined in singing this. And what we've got, thinking back to Big Daddy and Cat in the Hot Ten Roof. And Jill was, who was Big Daddy?
It's Cool Hand Luke.
Yeah, and he, he said mendacity. I smell mendacity. And I certainly heard a lot of mendacity here. Go back. Let's fight mendacity. Let's try moderation in behavior. Let's try some meditation. It might help. And let's try mediation. I believe this problem we've had that has dominated the town for 15 years can be solved, but we must do something with the old I G A part that we're stuck with. And we have to face that fact. We are stuck with an unusable, the old I G A. We have a buyer for the other two parts, the indoor shuffleboard car. But we must get together. And it's really a shame that we seem to be drifting further and further apart rather than coming together. And we hear, I hear this notion that the louder you shout and the meaning you get, you're going to get results. And I appreciate what Jill said about communication. Communication is about being effective. Yes, you can talk and you can talk and you can ventilate, but you are not, as a group, coming together. Good communication strives to get people together, not to further mendacity.
Thank you. I apologize. I thought you were going to do a quotation from Cool Hand Luke, but you didn't, so I was wrong. Stanley?
Yeah, sounds like we have failed in the communication.
That's what I thought he was going to say.
Communication, I mean, just set my brain off on that, but communication. Yes, I think it's very important for communication. But, you know, I think while we're conducting our communication, we should be really discussing facts. You know, opinions are fine and a lot of opinions are fine, but I'd like to hear facts, scientific facts, proven facts, something that's true for sure. And initially, I wasn't, I wasn't on any side of the library initially, but as we came down the road, first we hit this first speed bump was the treasurer says we can't afford it. He had experts running an analysis. Experts, people of wisdom, gave us, gave us the facts. We can't afford it. That's what they're saying. Now, last week, we get this 11-foot rising sea level. Now, you know, you know, we all wanted to challenge that, even I did. Up to, up to last week, I was kind of challenging, oh, yeah, global warming. That's, that's a fine thing, political issue, political issue. I always thought it was a political issue. Never really thought of pursuing it or considering it. Who cares? In fact, I like global warming. It's kind of nice and warm out there. Never considered the bad part of global warming. But now, I remember Mary saying, the water came up to Castle Street and that's without the 11-foot. So now, yes, planning should be happening now for the 11-foot. Maybe it's nine, I don't know. Maybe it's nine percent, maybe it's eight. But the experts are measuring and they got some analysis on projections based on weather patterns. I mean, they're experts. I gotta believe them. They have an opinion. They're telling us we're going to have a significant increase out there. And that tells me that the center of town is not where we should be focusing any significant building project. Therefore, I had to change my mind. And I said, okay, it's not, maybe we can give a million dollars for an upgrade because the library we have is temporary. It's going to be flooded. It's temporary, 25, 30 years temporary. So let's do a temporary million dollar, money point five. Let's do a temporary upgrade to let it do what it's doing. And that's fine. Nice, quiet space. But now, our focus, and I witnessed the community center, looks like a million dollars out there. Been rehabbed. I see the bike path going right to it. All the kids, and I see the kid said he likes the bike path. My grandson does too. So now you've got a bike path, you've got an access to this community center, a perfect spot for a library annex. Annex for a library. Annex for all library. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, see, none. Yes.
One comment. Jim Tierney, town manager. I recently had the privilege to attend, uh, the installation of Archie Partington, the fire department, as the president of the Rhode Island Association of Fire Chiefs. And, um, he, uh, he leads them like he's the department. They'll do well. And I'd like you all to join me in the council and congratulate him.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Have a good night. Thank you.